So as a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
And Scott Kinter? I don't see. Have you heard anything from Scott?
Uh, he's having some technical problems.
Okay, hopefully he'll be with us shortly. And our associate member, Steve Manjoe?
Yes.
And town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kristen Grubbs, Planning Director, very first meeting as Planning Director. Congratulations, Kristen. It was wonderful.
Thank you. Hi, everybody.
Anticipated speakers and presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative, although I don't see any pictures up there. Steve Sawyer yet? Uh, Gage Foley or Eric Sorenson? Well, they are our anticipated speakers and hopefully will be along shortly. Um, good evening. This July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, which extends the governor's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law general laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, until March thirty one, twenty twenty five. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable access, public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. And I'm going to interrupt myself for a second and just note that we have a full board now. Scott Kinter is with us. Evening, Scott. Uh, for this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to H T T P colon backslash backslash doom dot zoom dot U S in entering meeting ID number eight, three, two, seven, one, four, one, three, zero, five, six, passcode one, zero, eight, seven, nine, zero, or by calling one, nine, two, nine, two, zero, five, six, zero, nine, nine, and entering the meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and that W W W dot T N C T V dot org. And the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you've been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name, provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button, or if you're on your phone, star six, uh, star six to toggle mute or unmute when you're not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recordings. For any response, please state, uh, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. Uh, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand function. Video conference participants, to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants, to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the participant or applicant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again, afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they'll be noted for the record and again, participant, applicant, or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And finally, um, please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by, uh, roll call votes. So turning to the agenda, uh, our first item is liaison and meeting reports. Uh, the first item is Z B A, and that's me. The Z B A last met on, uh, July eighteenth, there were two, um, public hearings, uh, um, on the agenda. Went for thirty-one Rolfe Lane, and that was essentially to, um, finalize a decision on the, uh, on a previously voted approval. And the other, uh, on Five Cinder Avenue has actually been continued to, um, August first. The Z B A is going to be, uh, holding their August meeting early and it's going to be on the first. That was to accommodate that council, I believe, for the applicants in that case, and the only matter on the agenda. And that's it for the Z B A. Uh, Conservation Commission, Woody?
Conservation met last week. Um, there were a bunch of things on the agenda, septic, uh, extension for the trustees on Hay Street. Sort of piling to support a foundation. Few other things, uh, the only thing that really pertain to us was, um, the Sunset Club, we met with them, but they are waiting on materials from the engineers and other things, so there wasn't much discussion. So we'll be being with them in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Woody. And M V P C, Pete, I know you're our newest M V P C member, but I believe they're in summer hiatus, are they not?
They are.
So can I assume your report is complete?
It is completed at that.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the June twenty twenty four, um, financial report. So the following payroll and invoices were authorized, payroll warrants for Planning Director and Assistant Planner, P R twenty-four dash twenty-five for the pay period ending six, one, twenty-four, uh, P R twenty-four dash twenty-six for the pay period ending six, fifteen, twenty-four, P R twenty-four dash twenty-seven for the pay period ending six, twenty-nine, twenty-four. And under Planning Board's stipends, P R twenty-four dash twenty-six, uh, also included the stipends for the board members for the period from January one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. We had the following M V P C invoices, Merrimack Valley Planning Commission pictometry, six, twelve, twenty-four, Merrimack Planning Commission assessors maps, my map, six, twelve, twenty-four. And under Planning Board expense invoices, for the North of Boston Media Group Republic hearing legal notices, six, twelve, twenty-four, uh, Kristen Grubbs employee reimbursement, six, thirteen, twenty-four, Horizon Wireless Planning Board iPad, uh, six, twenty-five, twenty-four, uh, Martha Taylor employee reimbursement, six, twenty-eight, twenty-four, and the Minuteman Press Master Plan Printing, six, twenty-eight, twenty-four. So that concludes the, um, financial report. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing and we can't open that until seven fifteen, so we've got five or six minutes to go. Um, maybe we could turn towards the end of the agenda and under Planning Board meeting minutes for review and approval, take up the June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, uh, meeting minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those? Does anyone have any questions, comments, requests for changes regarding the June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four meetings as presented? Hearing none? Do I hear a motion to approve the, uh, June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes? I'm not sure who I heard first. Was that Woody?
Sure.
Do I have a second?
Why not?
Okay. Is second Mary?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Then Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote on the motion? You're muted, Scott.
Yes.
All right, and, uh, I vote yes as well. So those meeting minutes are approved and we still have five minutes to go before the, like, we, we do have a, a, a report on meeting minutes approvals and, um, I just get into that briefly. Um, if you recall, uh, during the pandemic, um, we got behind on our meeting minutes and, uh, we consulted with town council and, um, uh, town council advised us that, uh, the board could, uh, designate one member to review and approve those minutes on behalf of the board. And that, that was me. I was, the vote was to, uh, permit me to do that, um, as Chair, um. Uh, so we, we've, um, made pretty good progress with that. Uh, Kristen, we still have a few old meeting minutes from, uh, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, I think, that, uh, we still need to address, correct?
Yeah, there's, yeah.
Yeah, and, and my memory of the, of the vote was that, um, I, I was authorized to, uh, to, uh, approve, uh, any meeting minutes prior to January first, twenty twenty-three. From January twenty, uh, first, twenty twenty-three forward would require the whole board, as, as is the, the common practice. You'll know, we also have reorganization, um, uh, on tonight, so, uh, it depending on how that goes, I may no longer be Chair, but I'm happy to continue on with the task of, uh, of approving those minutes if the board sees fit. Um, so depending on where we are at the, uh, at the close of, um, after, uh, the reorganization, for example, I, I might stay on as clerk, uh, and, and continue on with that task. But I just wanted to explain that in advance. I think it would require a separate vote in order to authorize me to continue. So we'll come back to that later. And, uh, we've got about three minutes to go. I don't think, I'd, I'd like to, uh, get into the public hearing as our next order of business because some of the other, uh, items might take some time. So if you just bear with me, we've got about two minutes to go and then we can open that public hearing. And we do have Steve, Steve Sawyer with us.
Yes, I'm here. Yep, yeah, I'm here.
A raised hand in my lower right screen. Is that, uh, a member of the public with a raised hand or is that?
Could, that could be, I wonder if that's, um, Gage. I know, I'm not sure if he's going to try and log in also.
Oh, I think it's Eric Sorenson. Okay, so again, just bear with me and, uh, we can, um, get into, uh, the public hearing. Steve, are you in your attic or is that a, uh, background?
That's my attic.
Okay, well.
Semi-finished, just, just call me Rapunzel.
No, it's a good thing we don't have these, uh, planning board meetings in, uh, midday.
Yeah. Yeah, actually it is air conditioned though.
Okay.
It's, yeah, yeah, it's, it's conditioned space, just not quite finished. We didn't really need the space, so we never finished it.
You got a great.
More comfortable than it looks.
Steve, you've got a great, uh, video. It's, it's very crisp.
Oh, actually the black background, yeah, makes it, uh, you know.
I jump out at you.
You do.
It's like some sort of horror, horror movie.
It's a black.
Mary, Mary has the new Photoshop, um, you know, button, you know, on Zoom.
Well, I used to, I, I used to have a nice background pic from Iceland, but I, I just got a new computer. I gotta find, I gotta find the picture and throw it back, throw it back for the background when I'm up here. Little, little better than looking at rafters and installation.
Not to interrupt you, Steve, but it's seven fifteen, so we can get into the public hearing.
Perfect.
So this is a continued public hearing, um, for Seven Bittersweet Lane, map U zero nine, a lot twenty-one B common driveway special permit application. Uh, owner David W Foley Senior and Nancy J Foley and the applicant Gage Foley. And, uh, uh, just a reminder that, um, uh, the only voting members on this, uh, are myself, Pete, Woody, and Mary. Um, so I think when we last met, um, Steve, you provide this with updated easement documents and summarized the revisions. And, uh, we requested that staff to send the draft decision, the revised easement documents to Town Council for review. And, uh, Kristen, can you just bring us up to date?
Sure, um, so we continued the hearing from the June meeting, but we had received comments from Town Council in the middle of June, which were shared as a red line with the applicant and with the planning board members. Um, so those, uh, changes, I think, were deemed appropriate and we have, um, accepted those and shared a clean document around, um. And Steve, you can chime in, but in addition, there were some changes, uh, edits proposed for the easement plan, um, the survey plans, and those have also been made. So, um, so all the clean documents have been shared. Town Council has, um, reviewed again and said everything is looking good.
And you've, you've got correspondence from Town Council about the, approving the decision of the easement documents again. Uh, while I'm repeating what you just said, Kristen, eventually.
Yeah.
Um, there is just, I, I don't know, we, we've seen this decision, I think, several times and, uh, does any, I don't see the need to go through it paragraph by paragraph. Uh, does anyone have any questions or comments or would like to address particular provisions in the, uh, in the decision? There, there is one thing I think we ought to look at, Kristen. Can you share the decision with us?
Sure.
And this is.
Can you see that?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm looking, um, it's, um, page six, I believe, in particular, uh, Kristen and the deed requirements.
Um, I should mention on this page, um, just, uh, Steve, um, there were three sheets to the site plans and we, um, had previously received, um, the updates in April, in the middle of April. So these plans have just been, um, updated with that April fifteenth date. And, um, the planning board signature block added a couple of minor things. So the, this is, these are the same revised plans that you've already seen. But there was an edit made to the decision just to update the reference.
Thank you, Kristen. Yeah, this, this is the language. I just wanted to point out, um, in, uh, in particular, um, the, uh, sentence, uh, in the middle, uh, as the current deeds of ownership fail to satisfy the association requirements, that is the association for a homeowner's association to maintain the, uh, uh, the common driveway. Um, new proposed deed shall be submitted, uh, to reviewed and approved by Town Council prior to the Planning Board endorsement, endorsing final plans. Uh, I understand that language was actually drafted by Town Council. Is that correct, Kristen?
Yeah, just this one sentence was added because this is a requirement in the bylaw that there be, um, an association or that the deeds reflect the agreements among the homes sharing the common driveway. Um.
Yeah, Steve, I, I assume you've seen and, and are comfortable.
Yeah. So we had some email, um, Gage, and actually Gage emailed both, um, Kristen and, Kristen and I about that. I, you know, me not being an attorney, but my understanding is, I imagine the deeds for both, um, Gage, for, like, actually the other Doug and Alex, the other, it was at nine and eleven, probably those deeds probably don't have any reference to the agreements of, of this common driveway. So I imagine we, we forwarded everything, forwarded the comments and the decision off to Matt today. Um, Matt Gaines, the attorney. And so I imagine what's going to have to happen is the deeds for all three lots are going to have to reference, make sure they provide a reference to the easement. So, you know, in perpetuity, that, you know, that the homeowner's sign and the easement agreement, but the deeds that they, of the properties they own, I guess, don't refer to it. So, um, I believe that's what the, the Town Council's referring to. So that's in process. I, Matt's always, he just, we just got the email out to him this afternoon. I imagine he'll work with, um, was it Steve? Steve Chaplin, uh, make sure that whatever deed updates that need to happen can get done and, and everything will be taken care of. And the, I can, I guess what he said, you know, in his comment was, or upon that, the board can sign the, you know, sign the, um, the, the plans in, uh, the decision or at least the plans or endorse, so endorse the plans, yeah.
Yeah, but that, I just, I, I, I'm, I was confident that you had read that, but I just wanted to call it out for the record.
Yeah.
Cause I think this is the only thing of substance that's, uh, uh, different from what we've previously seen.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Let me go through the board members, um. Uh, Pete, are you, do you have any questions, comments?
No questions. Thank you.
No? Uh, Woody, the same question?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
No, Mary?
No questions, no comments. Thank you.
Uh, are we comfortable in, uh, um, moving to, um, uh, to, uh, uh, approve the decision as presented?
Yes.
Anyone here that, maybe I can come up with some better language. Oh, I should ask, uh, Kristen, are there any members of the public?
I don't see anyone.
Have any questions?
We haven't received any additional comments.
Okay. Well, do I have a, a motion then to approve the common driveway, uh, permit decision?
You do.
Thank you, Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, I would have said Mary on that one. Um, all right, is there any further discussion? And, uh, uh, Steve, I'll, and, uh, Scott, even though you're not members, uh, I'm not voting on this, uh, if you have any comments or questions?
I have none, thanks.
All right, then, uh, on the motion, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So it's unanimous among the four eligible voting members. And lastly, Kristen, I think, uh, we, uh, just need a motion to close the public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, I just want to, Mary, did you have a question about the decision? Give your hand raised.
Me? No.
Yeah.
You, you have to raise your hand and you're. Okay.
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 Um, yes, so at this point, the board can close the public hearing and there will, you know, everything will be in order. We'll finish that work on the deeds with the attorneys and then the board will be able to.
Will have to get the decision signed and recorded with, with Town Council. So, but I have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Any discussion? All right, hearing on Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, well, best of luck to the Follies and, uh, Steve, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We hit the, I think, Gage hit the trifecta on this, all, all three boards. But it's done.
Good, good.
It's done and I hear that it sounds like the house will be done in November or sometime in November. So it's all, it's all moving along. So that's good news. And I thank, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Uh, all right, next item on the agenda is the Newbury Golf Center. We have Eric Sorenson, one thirty-one Scotland Road. Request for approval of ASBIL plan and release of performance guarantee. Eric, good evening.
Good evening. How you doing?
Good. So bring us up to date. Where are we with this?
So I think we're, you know, we're going on our four-year anniversary being open in August and, you know, I think we've completed everything that is asked. Um, we've requested a letter. I think the ASBIL's been reviewed by Joe Sawaka. Um, I think we're in pretty good shape, uh, on our end, obviously. With the board, any questions or anything, you know, they want to see or be more than happy to answer anything about the facility.
So basically.
And four years.
Um, so basically you're looking to close out the site plan review, um, uh, and requesting approval of the ASBIL plan and release of the performance guarantee, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, have you seen Joe Sawaka's, um, letter on today's date, July twenty-fourth?
I did, and I talked to my engineer about it, so I, I had, I can answer anything on there if you want me to answer any questions on there.
Well, I, I, it's, um, let me just summarize. Can you, can you pull that up, um, Kristen?
Yeah. Yeah, let me, let me find it.
Okay, so, everyone see that? So he, he's calling out some things, Eric, which, uh, I'm not an engineer, uh, so I, I, I mean, they don't strike me as, um, uh, anything earth-shattering, but, uh, number one, uh, the plan shows a dumpster in the concrete pad. The engineer applicant should address whether an enclosure was approved around the dumpster. Are, are you going to address that?
Sure. So that was something that was discussed with the planning board and with Martha Taylor and, um, that was something that was requested by the board for us to do. So I did put that, um, we put that around it, the, uh, the fence.
Oh, apparently, but apparently it doesn't show on the ASBIL plan, I guess, is the point.
Yeah, I mean, I think it should have been. I don't know why it wasn't, um, but that was something that was, I don't know why you didn't put it in there. But it was discussed multiple times with the board. Obviously, we did that for the neighbors. Um, they can't see it, even if it wasn't there, but we did put that and it's around it.
Okay. Um, the following items were noted on my, and quoting again, the six, six, twenty-four conservation review letter, but do not appear to have been addressed. The board may choose to have the engineer address these items. D M H one is noted as buried in the drainage structure table and no ASBIL information is provided. The structure should be located raised to finish grade and ASBIL information obtained for the plan as is typical.
So I, I did talk to Scott about that. He said that was, that's below, slightly below, below grade. It's in the grass where it, you can see it and we can drive the mower right over it on that one, on that first, first one.
Yeah, but again, I, I think the issue is that it doesn't appear in the ASBIL.
Okay. So do you, okay.
On number two, the outlet pipe for grass depression, number one, appears to be at one, about one foot higher than shown on the approved plan. The engineer should discuss or evaluate the difference.
So two and three, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
So two, two and three, speaking with Scott this afternoon, he's in a meeting tonight. Um, he said those were discussed and, and reflect on the plan and in his calculations. And he, he said he had actually discussed this with Joe, both two and three. And it is, it is in his calculations and he points it out on the plan. So that's, you know, I can have him reach out or actually write something, but he said those two are, are already been discussed. He was surprised that they were on there. I know he, you know, obviously we're going back four years, um, with this project, but I, you know, be more than happy to have him discuss it or write a letter saying that it's, you know, and point it out. And again, I'm not an engineer, I'm just, so I don't know that stuff and I'm not pretending to know it. Um, the dumpster I do know because I remember the conversations, but, um, the other two things, obviously, that's between, you know, my engineer, Scott Cameron and Joe Sawaka. But that was his recollection of it and said, Eric, that's been pointed out multiple times, two and three. So I don't know what's the, what the board needs on that or what, you tell me what you'd like me to do from that point.
Um, yeah, I mean, neither one of. Um, yeah, I mean, neither one of us are engineers, and that's the problem, quite frankly, I don't know how significant these issues are. Other than the fact that our our um. Uh, our engineer says that they need to be on the plan. Let me turn to the board members and see if they have any comments, Pete, anything?
Yeah, you know, you do wanna wrap this up and I appreciate that, but you know, these are just the final details, I think that do need to be uh. Um, validated uh on the plan, and once after we have this discussion, I just wanna come back to something else uh for a sec, Larry.
Okay. Um. Uh, Woody, do you, you have any thoughts?
Uh, just that the as-built reflects what's built there, so a few few issues, the dumpster. I guess should be, definitely should be shown on the as-built plan. The other ones, as everyone else has stated, we're not engineers, so.
Yeah, uh, Mary?
Devils in the details, my friends, and um, in this case. We have a detail that needs to be fixed as soon as possible. That'd be okay.
Uh, and Scott, I I think you can vote on this because it's not a public hearing and it's a largely administrative at this point. Um, do you?
I would, I would concur with Pete, I mean, it, I think the entire, or. I would assume the entire board would like to uh. Get this off their plate and get off, get it off your plate, Eric, but um. You know, I I do think um. Like number two, uh, if it's already all been addressed, um. You know, it uh. Um, it may not be as addressed as it should be, um, and frankly, I like number two. You 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 may not see, you know, calculations and data, you know, on the plan, but a letter may accompany the plan. You know, from the engineer that speaks to, um, you know, the flow counts and and all of that, and uh, the same thing for number three. Um, just the um. Um, with the flow or the elevation, you know, meets the uh intent or, you know, the engineer just can certify. Um, that um, uh, it meets the intent of the plan or the original plan. So it's just, just real minor, um, doesn't look like it's much, uh. Um, so, uh, devils in the details, as Mary says.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, Steve, anything you'd like to uh add?
I agree with what's been said before, I think the facts on the ground need to be reflected in the plan or the as-bills. Thank you.
Yeah, Eric, let me ask you, where where are you with conservation and the select board, I I think?
So, yeah, we closed, we closed our conservation a couple of weeks ago, and then. Your order was to close out with you and then go the final to the select board. That was the kinda order that Martha laid out to me, that she wanted how this to go. Um, I'll be more than happy to come back to you with. My engineer to update the plan, address Joe's, since this was this afternoon, it's last minute, obviously, we just got this, I didn't see this till two o'clock. And come back with you with, you know, addressing these four points on the plan and if. You know, where they are in the calculations and from an engineering standpoint. If that's what.
I think that's what I'm hearing from the board too.
Yeah, not a problem at all, that's easy.
Yeah, um, and I I'm sure that, I'm sure uh you can work things out with Joe. Uh, Pete, there was something you wanted to add?
There was, and I I'm not sure if this is uh of significance, Eric, and you can help uh the board, last time I did a sidewalk. Um, there was some stockpile materials uh down by where that dumpster is, I think, I think it was sand and I don't know what else. I'm not sure if that's supposed to be there, if that's going to be there permanently, uh, if that's, you know, part of the long-term plan, uh, is that still there?
So one pile's gone, so we we get deliveries throughout the year, we just move it out because it's easy to pick up if you put it on the ground, so what it is, it's divot mix. So we get it and we, or it's for um aeration, so we get it and we move it out of there, and it's just easy, if you put it on the ground, it gets contaminated.
Got it, so.
So we move, we move it out throughout the year, so one pile, one pile's already gone and one, the other pile's almost done.
Perfect, so this will be something that'll be recurring, I would take it from what you just said, so should the plan reflect that there'll be a stockpile area there, kind of on a long-term basis?
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely put it there if the board would like it, I mean, it's not there every, all the time, but it. It could be there depending on the time of the year when we need it, so you, would you like me to reflect that on the plan?
It'll be easy, that way you know it's there, we know it's there, and it's.
Okay.
So, so much.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, great, well, thank you, Eric, and as Scott said, we would like to get you going on this and. I'm sure, I'm sure you'll be happy to see the end of us too.
So why don't I, why don't I uh? Get in touch with my engineer, get the plan updated, have him address those in either a letter. Um, to you guys, get the stockpiles on there for you, Peter, and then uh, if you need anything else, and then I'll I'll get it to you before, when's your next meeting?
Um, I, that's, our next meeting is. Tell you in a second, uh, we don't, we don't uh need to um. Is, this is not a public hearing, so we don't need to vote on a continuance date, so whenever you get uh things in, you know. Um, in order, uh, you can just contact Kristen and and get on the agenda.
Okay, I imagine it'll be, it'll be quick, I'll be, if you guys are meeting in two weeks, I'll be able to get this quickly, I imagine.
Yeah, to answer your question, our next meeting should be. August seventh, Kristen?
Yeah, if the board stays with the same first and third Wednesday, it's, that's. Uh, August seventh, two weeks.
Okay.
So it'll be the seventh or the twenty-first of August, we may have to move some things around for September because of the holiday and uh. Um, but hopefully we can get you in in August and and get this.
Okay, yeah, I will get as soon as possible, get it to Kristen and uh, hopefully you can get this thing to the finish line.
Good, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks.
Moving on, uh, next item on the agenda is the thirty-four Central Street Notice of Withdrawal from Chapter sixty-one A. And discussion and the uh, select board has received, um, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the property. That's the ten acres or so behind the um. Fire station. On Central Street and which is also one of our sub-districts in the MBTA Communities Bylaw. Um, so then on July ninth, the uh planning board received uh a certified mail notice of intent to sell and convert land pursuant to general. Generalize chapter sixty-one A, section fourteen to thirty-four Central Street, the current use of the nine-point-five acre parcel is agricultural and horticultural. And the buyer's pre-proposed use will convert the land for residential uses. So pursuant to general laws, uh, the town has a period of a hundred and twenty days to exercise its right of first refusal option to meet the bona fide. Offer for the land, which is, I believe, a million fifty thousand dollars. The select board has asked the planning board and other boards, I believe, as well to consider the notice and. And any comments or recommendations on the right of first refusal. And uh, the select board will be holding a public hearing on this, I don't know if that's been uh. Uh, has that public hearing been set yet, Kristen?
Um, the select board met last night and I, I don't think they've set the date yet, they need to. Um, there'll be a legal ad and legal notice, so it may be at their end of August date, but it may move into September depending.
Okay.
So I can let you know.
So anyway, um, again, this is the parcel was rezoned at town meeting and is now included in the MBTA multifamily overlay district. But I guess the question for us is what recommendation this board might wanna make, I I think there are three options. One would be to recommend that they exercise the option, which I'm. I I don't say that is, in the sense that I'm advocating for it. The other would be to recommend that uh, that they do not exercise the option. Uh, or lastly, I suppose we could just recommend will of the of the select board. Anyone care to weigh in on this? I mean, uh, my own feeling is, I'll start it, uh, we went to a great deal of of um. Uh, work, uh, rezoning this parcel as part of the MBTA Communities um. Uh, by law and uh, which uh passed overwhelmingly at town meeting. Very gratifying to hear and uh, the whole purpose was to uh. Um, uh, stimulate affordable housing in town and multifamily housing in particular, and as far as I understand it. Uh, the developer in this case uh has been waiting to make sure that that bylaw passed before they exercised their option. Um, so uh, you know, my feeling is uh, to do other than. Uh, recommend, uh, well, for the the town to purchase it, first of all, I don't know if that's financially, if it's feasible. You know, to come up with a million fifty thousand dollars, and secondly, would, it seemed to me to defeat the purpose of the MBTA Communities Bylaw that we. Uh, that was passed, so I'd welcome any other comments that any of the board members might have.
But Larry, I would, I would kind of echo of that, this dovetails completely with what the intention was of the, of our, our. Our proposed bylaw change and what the planning board's recommendations were for multifamily uh housing, and this fits that, so I think that this parcel. Appropriate for that, so I think can be a wonderful opportunity to facilitate that process, and I'll. Into the first step would be for the town to release its. Uh, right of pressure kills, so that's where I'd be with this.
Anyone else have any uh, any thoughts on this?
It's a overarching uh issue, um, Larry, but. Does anyone have any idea whether or not uh this uh pushback on the community uh? Um, uh, the affordable housing um zoning regulation is going to have legs at any point? I guess I'll rephrase. Is there any possibility that what we have achieved? Might be moot in that. The governor has come under fire for this uh. Affordable housing. Um, for every town, so there's. There's a sort of a rebellion, I guess, among some of the towns that have um thought it was a little bit uh. Too much.
Well, there was, there was a lot of pushback initially, certainly, and probably still is in a lot of communities, um, I know that there was one. Was it, uh, I forget which community it was that uh. Um. Is involved in litigation with the state over the requirement. And I, I don't know where that litigation is, um. But uh, to to answer your question, uh, honestly, Mary, I don't know.
I know, I know, I I just.
You know, I mean, let, let's, let's assume, for example, that that the um. Uh. The Supreme Judicial Court were to say that the statute was somehow invalid or that it was inappropriate. I don't know that that would necessarily mean that our bylaw was void. I, maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't, I guess, you need to look at the decision. So um. Uh, I hear, I hear your concern, um. But uh, to to vote to exercise the option, I think we would need to have some plan for the property. And uh, you know, an extra million fifty thousand dollars kicking around too. Cause that's ultimately up to the select board, I mean, we're just, we're just making a recommendation.
Sure.
And the, and the select board gets free to accept it or reject it or, or do whatever they want with it. Um. I don't know, uh, uh, go ahead, Steve, do you have your hand up?
Yes, uh, again, it's my understanding that the Supreme Judicial Court will be hearing the case in September or thereabouts. And we'll see how that goes. And what the ruling says when it does come down, uh, but I also heard you talking about the MBTA Communities Act. And affordable housing, and I thought that the MBTA Community Preservation Act was not about affordable housing. Then indeed, there was a restriction in how much affordable housing the individual towns could uh mandate on one of these. Um. Rezoned.
Well, I, I, I think you're right, Stephen, my language was sloppy, quite frankly, I shouldn't have used that term. Uh, I I believe that that the theory is that if um. Multifamily housing would eventually through market forces. Um. Result in more moderately priced housing, maybe would be a better way to put it, but I I'm certainly no expert on that, I, you know, you're. Yeah, anyone's opinion is as good as mine. Um. I'm, I'm sorry, Kristen, I asked you this and. You know, I had a senior moment, where are we with the select words uh? Um, the public hearing on this?
Um, they, they haven't set the date yet. They anticipate the end of August or maybe beginning of September.
So we don't necessarily have to make a decision on this tonight then, if if the board is not comfortable going forward with it. I.
We don't need to, I'm happy to answer more questions, I, just to, just to respond to Steve's comment, it's. Um. There you. The MBTA, the three A law, um, allowed you to include ten percent. Affordable in your bylaw, which is what Newbury chose to do, you were, you are allowed to. Um, raise that price, but you had to do an economic feasibility analysis, which Newbury didn't do. But um, but you're correct, it's, you know, it's not explicitly uh affordable. Um, initiative, housing initiative, it's a multifamily zoning initiative. Um, and just to say to Mary, um, and Larry sort of said this, but uh. Newbury passed a zoning bylaw, so with any zoning bylaw that's passed, it gets reviewed by the Attorney General, and as soon as. We hear back from the Attorney General, they have ninety days to review the bylaw, so we haven't received. A letter back from the Attorney General yet, but as soon as we do, that bylaw is, is our regulation, so. Regardless of the MBTA legislation outcome, Newbury will. Assuming the Attorney General approves the bylaw, that'll, that'll be why we have, those districts will be zoned for multifamily housing.
Okay. Thank you.
So I guess we got a little time, uh, the town has. I counted my fingers, what, till November, um, to uh make a decision. And um. I don't know, what's the, what's the sense of the board, do we wanna, uh, do we wanna uh? Try to move on this tonight or or put it over for um, for for the meeting? Again, uh, it's not a public hearing, so we don't have to set a date for a continuance, we can get it back on the agenda whenever's. Seems most of.
I think we can go ahead, um. That's my feeling.
My. My gut feeling is we just go with uh, three, will of the select board on this matter.
Okay. So um, Mary, you're, I just saw, I get a sense, your, your sense is to um. Uh, recommend uh that they uh don't buy the property, that.
Correct.
And Woody, your sense is that uh will of, uh, just uh vote the will of the select board?
Yes, uh, ultimately, they have the decision and. I agree with what everyone said about it, we, we took the time and put it in as MBTA zoning. So e- either, either don't, don't, the town don't buy it, or just will of the select board because it's ultimately up to them.
Right. Pete, you look very thoughtful, would. Would, you're also muted.
Smug.
Yeah, I I I'm comfortable with uh, uh, you know, letting the select board make the, make the decision. Um, that, that's, I'm comfortable with that, completely.
You are?
Yeah.
Uh, Scott?
Uh, um, I'm the same.
Okay, then Steve?
Much the same, I think we should uh. Present it to the select board for them to make a decision.
Okay, does, does anyone care to make a motion then?
So moved.
You, you're recommending uh that the, the planning board's recommendation is will of the select board, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Any further discussion? Then Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so and Steve, I, we appreciate your opinion as well. Okay, thank you. Um. Where are we on the agenda, let's see? Oh, okay, um, all right, now, uh, free organization, election of planning board officers uh to be effective August one, twenty twenty-four. For the chair, vice chair and clerk. Um, I have been chair for two years now, and uh, I, I think it's time to give someone else a voice. And I know Pete, you were chair for at least two years prior to me, uh, if not longer, if my memory serves. And uh, Woody, uh, you are the senior member of the board who has not uh acted as chair, um, so I'm gonna put it to you. If you're interested in taking over the gavel.
Sure. Yes, uh, that would be great.
Okay. Um, and uh, for the reasons that I, I um. Articulated earlier about the meeting minutes. Uh, and Scott, uh, I'm kind of getting you off the hook on this, because usually it's the junior member of the board who gets to be. Uh, and Scott, uh, I'm kind of getting you off the hook on this because usually it's the junior member of the board who gets to be clerk. Which uh only means you have to read the public hearing notices, but uh I'd offer myself as clerk so that I can continue on uh with the um. Um, with the um uh approval of the old uh meeting minutes. Um, and then that would be vice chair. Pete, are you interested in staying on as vice chair or would you?
I'd be happy to.
Okay. All right. Uh, any further discussion?
Well, if Woody's up, I'm staging a coup.
There you are. All right.
Well, thank you, Larry, I appreciate that.
It's a vote of confidence, Woody.
Uh, I know you mean that tongue in cheek. Well, would anyone then, I suppose we could rather than take each office individually. Um. We could just move the slate. Would anyone care to move? Uh, that effective August first, Woody would uh be chair, Pete would be vice chair and I would be clerk.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any further discussion? Then uh Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so Woody. Congratulations.
Thanks, you guys, for stepping up. More than I can say.
And uh also, the next item, uh, and it's, it's usual, uh, when we do reorganize to um. Designate authorized signatures, signatories, excuse me, primary signatory and alternate. For A and R plans and invoices and payroll. So that is traditionally the chair and the vice chair. And I would certainly recommend that we stay with that uh um arrangement. So uh unless there's any further discussion, would anyone uh? Uh, care to move uh that effective August first with the reorganization? Uh, that uh Woody as chair be the primary signatory and Pete uh as vice chair, the alternate signatory for A and R plans, invoices and payroll. So moved, Scott. All right, Woody, thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any further discussion? All right, then Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So. And that brings us to liaison positions. Um. We really haven't had a, a select board liaison, uh, the um. Uh, planning director has really routinely reported as part of the planning director's report on, on items. Um, for the um, uh, that come before the select board that are uh import to this board. So um, uh, I, I don't know that we need one, uh, does anyone have any thoughts on that? All right, I, I think Kristen, you're happy reporting back to the board as part of your planner's report.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean. If someone on the planning board wanted to regularly attend and report back, but otherwise, you know, I keep an eye on the meetings and I'm. You know, I've talked with Tracy and David about. Just making sure when there are items on the agenda that pertain to planning, that I'll be sure to attend and report back.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we won't take a vote on that, and as far as ZBA liaison goes, I've been the ZBA liaison for um several years. I'm happy to do it. I enjoy the meetings, but if anyone else has a, an interest in it, I'm more than happy to step aside. But um.
Larry, I think you'd be great to continue on doing that.
All right, thank you. I don't know, Kristen, do you need a motion on that or do I just simply continue as liaison?
It's not. There's nothing official about these liaison roles, so I don't necessarily think.
It's not a formal position. I have absolutely no authority to speak to the ZBA for the planning board. It's simply to, to report back, so. If everyone's content with that, I'll simply continue on as the ZBA liaison.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Um, that brings us to her first ever planning director's report from Kristen Grubbs. Our new planning director.
Um, well, I, I should start out by saying just thanking Larry. From the perspective of staff and having been assistant planner for the last year and a half, I just really have learned. A heck of a lot from your being chair of this board and meeting with Martha and you in advance of meetings and reviewing things. And I just think you've done a really stellar job as chair, so.
Well, thank you, Kristen. Nice to hear. Thank you.
Um, and looking forward, Woody, to starting afresh. You and I can be. Be in this together, so thank you, stepping up. Um. So, yeah, just to continue on kind of some personnel updates, um. I wanted to formally uh just recognize how fun it was to celebrate Martha at the party. Retirement party on July eleventh. I know um many of you were able to attend. I have some really great photographs. I'm trying to figure out how to get photographs on the website, but I haven't figured that out yet, but um. Just really feel very honored to be uh, you know, carrying on in her shoes, they're big shoes to fill, but um. You know, I've, as I said, I've learned a lot working with her for the last year and a half, so looking forward to being director, um. Additionally, I wanted to say she's agreed to continue on and sort of uh um. Helping out and also carrying on in particular some of the zoning board um projects that um. You know, that she has helped with as planning director but aren't. Firmly in the planning department, they're in the zoning board's um lap, so. She'll be continuing on in a part-time role for the time being, so um just, you know, if you see her. Inside the office, um, that's why. And then I also wanted to just thank um Ella Duling, who I think some of you have met. She's been. Sort of being an informal volunteer slash planning intern um with us for the last. I think it's been ten or eleven weeks. She's been coming in on Tuesdays and. Learning about planning. She's an undergraduate student at University of Toronto, um, and interested in. Geography and planning, um, and she's an, obviously, well, maybe not obviously, but she's a Newbury resident, grew up in town, um. So her last day was yesterday, um, so I just wanted to sort of. Publicly thank her for all her volunteer time. She's helped out with grant applications. She's um. Done a lot of work on those old minutes, catching up the board's minutes. She's done some updates on the website and just in general been a really um. Really fun to have a young voice and, you know, good questions and good conversations, so thank you, Ella. Um, and then the assistant planner position, which is a full-time position, has been posted. It's on the town website. Um, it's on Mass Municipal Association website. I've been getting it up at um. The Planning University, University of Massachusetts, Tufts University, but there are a bunch of really good schools in Massachusetts that have. Um, planning programs, so getting it up on all their job boards, so. I've gotten four or five applicants already starting to take a look at those, um. Hope to get the position filled because it's. It's not easy being solo in here and missing Martha, so um, yeah. In addition to personnel news, um, there's some other planning projects that have been moving forward, um. I may have mentioned at a previous meeting that um. Newbury partnered with Newbury Port and received a grant from the FLAP program, which is the Federal Lands Access. Um, program, which uh is a feasibility study of the resiliency of Plum Island Turnpike. So that project, um, we drafted an RFP together with Newbury Port and that has been posted and. Applications are coming in, bids, bid proposals from engineering firms to help with that work. Um, the bid deadline is August eighth, so um. At some point later in August, uh, we'll know which firm is gonna be um working on that project with Newbury on Newbury Port, so. Keep you posted on that. And then just a quick update on green communities, um. Again, I think we mentioned at previous meeting, the town was awarded a designation as, as a green community, um, which required. You know, a bunch of uh work, planning work, development of an energy reduction plan for the town. And we received that designation, um, and then the first thing. DOER does, which is such a great part of the program, is say, okay, here's a chunk of money, what are you gonna do? Um, but you still have to apply and present a proposal for what you're gonna do with that chunk of money. So that application went in and it's um, the project is to support um uh energy reduction initiative at Newbury Elementary School. Um, the town's audit of energy use um determined that Newbury Elementary School uses about a third of the. Full energy that's used by the municipality and public, you know, public buildings and public spaces. So that was deemed to be the priority um project, uh, which is great. And the application went in last week, um. Uh, I worked with Public Works and um, and the Town Administrator's Office to get that in, and it's to support um. Uh. Uh, installing an energy management system in the school. I don't think there's been updates um to the. Um HVAC and other energy systems since the seventies when that school was built. So, you know, they're over thirty years old, um, and um, it'll fund. Replacing the pneumatic system, uh, the anticipation is there'll be savings in electricity, national, natural gas and a cost savings of twenty-three thousand dollars a year and. Um, in the cost of the uh, you know, heating and cooling for the building, so. So that was good. And that's it.
Thank you, Kristen. So lastly, uh, item on the agenda, we've already spoken, um, uh, the report on the meeting minute approvals. I think we've discussed those. Kristen, is there anything you'd like to add to the discussion?
Um, I just wanna note, Steve has a handout, which might have been about something I talked about, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that a question?
Yes, um, indeed, uh, two questions, two points, uh, regarding the assistant planning position. I. Seem to recall that the Mermack Valley Planning Commission has a number of people working there that came down from UNH. And I wonder if maybe that argues with trying to post the position up there as well. I'm not suggesting trying to pirate someone from the uh MVPC, but maybe UNH could be another uh fruitful source of applicants.
That's a great idea. Thank you. They do have a really good program, and there's also um. Someone just mentioned to me today at Merrimack College has a great public administration as well as UMass Lowell, so I'm gonna try to get it out there. Thank you, Steve, that's.
Right, your cup may runneth over or something like that.
I know, yeah.
And yet, the other question I had was about the flag grant, is, is there a role for anyone on the planning board to? Help you contribute to it or whatever? Obviously, I'm scratching my head about that, uh, on my own behalf, but.
Yeah, um, so I think I'll know more about that soon. I, um, you, if you haven't yet. Seen the RFP, you know, uh. The bid guidance, um, it's, you know, you can get an idea with that, but it, we've left some things kind of loose. But we are, you know, we did include tasks in the project that will be for public engagement and um neighborhood meetings and that kind of thing. So I think there will definitely be roles um for, you know, residents and planning board in particular, and I'll, I'll. Sort of keep an eye on that and let you know. Probably in August, we'll know more about that.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it. I well remember the, well, maybe not well remember, but do recall the, was it Horstley and Witten report that was done uh? Couple of years ago now, and.
Yeah.
It's a lot of public interest in that as well, and there may be some nuggets in that report that would be relevant and appropriate to think about. Once the proposals come in. And with that, again, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I, and I will just add, some questions came up about the um extent of the project area and it's. You know, it, it's limited from end to end due to the, what's required by the feds, by the feds, but um. But what we talked about with the Newbury Port Resiliency Committee is that I, we think the recommendations will be looking at. Um, strategies that will be relevant for any roads that flood. And as we know, through our hazard mitigation work and other things, Newbury certainly has other vulnerable um roads, so we'll be looking at. You know, culverts, High Marsh culverts, treatments and the restoration and also permitting, you know, upper. Permitting challenges and, and constraints as well as what the path forward is in a, in a way that will be pertinent. To be transferred to other locations, so it, I think it's gonna be interesting.
For sure.
Kristen, one question on the um assistant planner, uh, and the, and the, I guess, the um recruitment process or the interviewing process, um. How is that? How do you get somebody on board? How do you um? You know, get uh, you know, just the right candidate. I mean, is it all done? Uh, through you and other staff, you know, in, in town hall or the? You know, does a select board member or planning board member participate in any interviewing? I mean, what's the uh SOP?
Um. I can't really speak to sort of how it's been done historically, but what I've talked with um Tracy Blaze about for this is um. Applications are coming to me currently and I'm sort of gonna do the first review and maybe have early phone calls with people, and then when we get candidates in. Um, she'll be involved and I would be very happy to have a planning board member involved. I think she'd be very open to that, um, so. I don't know if that's been done in the past, but I, I certainly think that's a great way because the board. You know, can represent the board and like the issues that you see, and that's really, I, I would find that very helpful.
Okay, um, yeah, maybe we can have some more discussion at some point. Uh, but it's coming, right? I mean, it, it, I don't know how long, I know in the business world, sometimes it takes. Um, you know, two to three months to recruit, um, interview, make a job offer, you know, it's, it's, it can be very lengthy. Um, or, you know. Assistant planner position is probably, um, everybody wants it, um, I would love it, um, but uh. Um, you wouldn't want me, uh, but uh I don't know how long it takes, but I, I think, um, you know. At least uh one person from the board, um, you know, it might be helpful, um. Yeah, so. We could figure that out, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I. I, I'm completely, I would love it, so um, I, I think it's kind of up. Up to how many applications we get and the time I have to talk with people, how quickly it's gonna go. So two kind of unknowns, but obviously I would like to fill the position as soon as we have the right candidate, so. Um. I don't know, Larry, if, or Woody as incoming chair, do you? Do you wanna discuss that tonight or if someone wants to sort of be a point person with that project?
Um, I, I think you wanna uh talk to Tracy about it and get a sense of where she, she's coming from. Uh, I, I don't know enough about the personnel policies, uh, you know, to. Um. Uh, you know, to, to make a real firm judgment on that. Uh, you, you, you know, you could, you could look for, say, a citizen's volunteer input. I, as one person I have in mind. Her initials are MT. Um, you know, I mean, to talk to Tracy about it, um.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, again, I, I just don't know enough about the personnel bylaw and, and the requirements.
Yeah. I agree.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yeah, Kristen, um. You know, if the hiring authority lies solely with the town administrator, subject to the confirmation by the select board. Wh- where I'm going with that is that if the select board has to uh concur with the town administrators. Um, suggestion, you know, maybe the planning board would like to be able to, uh, give an opinion as well since. The planning department works closely with us. Perhaps as much with us or even more so than they do. With the select board. And that's really just a question for you to mull over or have the other members of the board to talk about right now.
No, I, I.
I can certainly follow up, um, with Tracy on that question as well.
Right. And again, some of that gets into, uh. Personnel hiring matters and bylaws, as Larry alluded to, so. Definitely want to. Ask the question in that spirit of, uh, ignorance on my part.
Okay, you're done?
Did you have a question, Mary? I wasn't sure. No.
No, I want to hear the person that speak. No offense, ladies and gentlemen. Well. Germs.
I'm all done with my report.
Okay.
Thanks, Kristen.
Do we want to grill or any further? All right. Well, back to, back to meeting minutes, um. I, I think the only thing left, uh, I would suggest a motion to authorize me, uh, as incoming, uh, clerk. Uh, to continue to, uh, 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 review and approve the old meeting minutes.
I would love to make that motion, Larry.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Any discussion hearing none? Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Thank you. Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So I guess I'm official, Kristen. And then we don't have too much more to go, I don't think. We, we, we've still got a few more, uh, meeting minutes from, uh. Uh, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, I think, but we've ma- we've made good progress. So we'll get caught up to date very quickly. And as far as the current minutes go, I think we are up to date now, Kristen. Are we not?
Yeah.
Yep. Good. Okay. Um. Unless anyone has anything further, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Woody. Any second?
Second.
Second, Mary, thank you. Any, any discussion hearing none? Uh, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Mary, how do you vote?
Mary?
Do I hear a yes?
Yes, and, and Kristen. So glad to have you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks.
Come on, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Steve, thank you. And, uh, good night, everyone.